August 24, a meeting of the Freetown Lake Regional School Committee to order.
Jeanne Fox?
Here.
Jerry Barron?
Here.
Paul Clark?
Yep.
Will Stinklin?
Here.
And Sylvia?
Here.
John Mert?
Here.
We have Lake Cam recording. Anyone else recording the meeting? No. All right. Before we begin, Mr. Strauss, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I think it's important that we, as a school community, have a moment of silence for the two members of the school community that we have lost this summer. Student Bryce Eng, who was a student here for a number of years, and from all I saw and heard and saw at his service was incredibly well-loved, young man, who passed away way too early. And also, just recently, one of our bus drivers, who we shared with Old Colony, Joyce Watson-Duber, passed away suddenly. Her daughter, Marissa, is going, was a student here through grade eight and is going to be a student at Old Colony. I have been in contact with Superintendent Polanski, and he and I are doing something from both schools for the family and for Marissa. But I think we, as a community, should have a moment of silence for both of them. Thank you.
Will, join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my nation, in my God, in the business of the great and generous. Thank you. So if there are folks here for public participation this evening, we're lacking a podium. So we would ask that you come up and sit next to Renee up here so that we can get it recorded, Lake Cam can record it. And yes, I see your hand. One second. And just when you do come up, tell us your name and your town. So why don't you join
Good evening. My name is Maureen Martowska. It's spelled M-A-R-T-O-W-S-K-A. I'm a resident of Lakeville, Massachusetts. I've been a longtime resident of Lakeville, Massachusetts, having two children going through the school system here. And I'm here today because I, in follow-up to an email that I sent to Renee Rodriguez, the executive assistant to the superintendent, I was, I'm myself a retired attorney. I'm a mom and a grandma. And I'm also a member of the National Alliance of Mental Illness. That is a nationwide organization. They are to support adolescents and adults in need of services and resources to help them along their life's path. Recently, the CDC, and it was March, I think it was the 21st, I'm sorry, the 31st of this year, issued CDC data following the COVID period that we've had. And in that data was pretty startling statistics, one of which was greater than 37% of students are experiencing poor mental health. That was one big statistic that was glaring me in the face. The second thing was 44% have consistent, persistent feelings of sadness and hopelessness. I'm a mom and a grandma who's been heavily involved with legislators, both in Connecticut and Massachusetts, to make sure services are available throughout the Commonwealth. I have helped as an advocate to make sure 988 became a hotline nationwide so that mobile intervention services would be available to anybody in need of it. And most importantly, National Alliance of Mental Illness, the Plymouth Division, of which I'm a member, has, there is a, throughout the Commonwealth, there is a push through our organization to make available, free of charge, to all, and any school district interested, and they've already begun that in several school districts, a free program that would be a presentation of, you have typically a choice of a 25-minute virtual online sort of presentation, or a 50-minute, again, free in-person presentation that includes, these are all trained by National Alliance of Mental Illness. We have psychiatrists and psychologists who are involved in the training and presentations of these and organization and material. They ask school districts to please engage with them, and they are more than happy to have you screen their material. But in light of these stark statistics, they want to make sure that these materials are available to students, especially middle school and high school students. They're, what they do is they teach students how to recognize early warning signs of mental health conditions, and also what to do if they or someone they know are exhibiting signs of mental health. It's sort of, I would put it akin to sort of Alateen, if there are many students who may have recognized issues with their peers, and they want to get them help and don't know how. With mental illness or mental health conditions, there is a stigma typically attached that they won't even come for the help until it's too late. I worked with many parents, some of who have lost their children to suicide, and in particular, a very close friend who lost her 17-year-old. And the signs were almost impossible to detect because they weren't shared with parents. And they're, it's very seldom that somebody wants to bring it to the forefront because there is a stigma attached to it. I'm here as a mother and a parent, asking my school in particular, because I've been a part of this community and want to help, even if it's only one child, give them the resources they need. And this is what's good about Niemi's presentation, is they will give the resources so that they can anonymously contact people who are engaged throughout this Commonwealth and this nation and know fully well what is available to them. So I would ask-
Thank you for that. I really appreciate this information. And we have the team right here that could tap into that. You know, happy to have everybody over there. Thank you for that, because you're right. The statistics are there, and they're stark.
Yeah.
You know, we try to keep our finger on the pulse, the team does, and the teachers do. But if there's a resource available, we certainly would consider taking advantage of that. But I would rely on our administrative team to do the first forays out there. Really, really appreciate it.
I appreciate that.
So the email was forwarded to school committee?
Yeah.
And then I did forward it as well to some of the adjustment counselors and guidance counselors in the schools.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that.
You're welcome. I thank you for taking the time to hear me on this.
So just so you know, our, my opening day as superintendent, one of the conversations that we're talking about when I talk to staff is the idea of talking about mental health. Taking care of our students, taking care of each other. I worry about our teachers' mental health, if I'm honest. And so it is, and it's not in the background, it's in the foreground. We're also going to be doing some work with, and you're probably familiar with them, Kyle Kares, who provides grant money, which is always a good thing, to bring in ongoing speakers so that kids can then have, I always worry sometimes about a one-off speaker, and then where do kids go? And so I want to be able to do something that's continuous, so that there is not just an adjustment counselor, but somebody with some other experience. So we're on.
That's terrific to hear. And please feel free, my email, you have it with my contact information, and two people in there that actually handle the program in Boston. I've made them aware that you might or might not.
Yep, we will.
But if you want to feel free, feel free to reach out to them.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Very grateful to you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation? Okay. Minutes, let's do the minutes. We have minutes from, seems like yesterday, June 22nd.
I don't see them in the packet.
So we're going to table that vote for now?
Yeah, thank you.
Any presentations to this school committee?
What I would like to do is introduce two people.
Would you?
I'd like to, I'm kind of going out of order, but I'll have my report. The first gentleman is a former Aponequik grad, who is now at UMass Dartmouth. His name is Jacob Hooley. And Jacob reached out to me as part of his internship program. He is an education major as well as a public policy major. And so one of the things that I firmly believe is that we need to bring young people into the fold, especially our own graduates. So Jacob's going to be working with me for his public policy side, looking at those things that he's allowed to look at. For example, he's looking at handbooks right now to make sure that they're consistent across the board. But it will give us some real good feedback to make sure that the language in the middle school and the language in the high school handbook is similar. He will be attending these meetings, he will be, so you will see him around. So I'm very excited that he's here.
Welcome.
Welcome.
I don't remember, what year did you graduate?
I graduated next year, and then-
But I mean here.
Oh, sorry, 2019.
Oh, we were all here. You didn't look like that.
Jacob, how do you spell your last name, please?
Hooley, H-O-O-L-E-Y.
Well, I'm glad I asked, because I had you as Pooley.
There's a lot of Hooleys out there.
Thank you.
So we're excited that you're here, Jacob. And there might be opportunities to look at some financials, you know, that's not off the record, you know. And again, it's an opportunity for you to start to learn some of the pieces. And I think that's why we're here. And hopefully, we can bring Jacob in as a teacher down the road. That's ultimately the goal. Second person I want to introduce you to is Maureen LaCroix. As all of you know, as part of my beginning as a new superintendent, is the new superintendent induction program. I will, I will start by saying that the work that I've been doing with Rick Maderas has been fantastic. He and I have traveled the two towns, and he's introduced me to a tremendous number of people. Yesterday, I met Representative Schmidt, Paul Schmidt, Senator Rogers, yep, and had a wonderful meeting with them. So we met all the police, we met the police chiefs in both towns, and it's just been really positive all the way across the board. But the second piece of my introduction to becoming a superintendent is Maureen. And so Maureen is my coach. She will be in and out of classrooms with me. She will be visiting schools, really to look at me, not at anyone else. It's really, what do I see? What am I observing? She came to our retreat to kind of see how the administrative retreat went. So I wanted you to see her face. I don't know if you're supposed to say anything, if you want to say hello, Maureen.
Sure.
Sure.
Well, if you could step up to the makeshift mic.
Maureen is a former superintendent in Bedford?
Bedford.
Bedford.
So thank you, Alan, and thank you to the school committee for allowing me to be here tonight. So I'll take just a couple of minutes. I'm Maureen LaCroix, as Alan said. I was in Bedford as superintendent for 11 years, and as assistant superintendent for four years. Prior to that, I held various positions in different districts, high school principal, high school English teacher, high school assistant principal, so I kind of came up the ladder into the superintendency. So now I'm a coach with NISIP, which is the new superintendent induction program. And this program is supported by the superintendents' association in Massachusetts, by the school committee association, and by the Department of Education. So there are three stools sort of supporting the program. The program was started 13 years ago. So Alan is in the 13th cohort of new superintendents. And it was started because in Massachusetts, people were starting to get worried that folks were coming into the superintendency, but they weren't lasting very long. Or they were coming into a district, perhaps they are two years, three years, and, you know, the research says it's really not healthy for a school district to have constant turnover. So folks at that time put their heads together and said, how can we help to change this picture? And that's when NISIP was born. There's two parts to the program. It's a program that steeps new superintendents in content, and also provides them with a one-on-one coach, believing that we want to develop a cohort over the three years of the program where people are learning together, but also provide them individual support onsite in the district. So as Alan said, I had the pleasure of meeting, what a terrific leadership team. And I had the pleasure of sort of being in the background last week, just observing that and seeing them launch as a new team here. And I'll just give, I don't usually give an opinion, but I'll give a biased opinion. You're in good hands here. You have a very strong team sitting across there from me at the table, and that's critical. One of the things we talk about in NISIP all the time is, how do you build that team? How do you support that team? Because the belief system is, the superintendent, and I knew this as a superintendent, we don't do the work on our own. We lead and we work through others. And we do that because we want to serve children, and we want to serve them well. So that's just a little snapshot of NISIP. You're going to get an intro to it tonight. One of the first pieces of work that we kick off in NISIP is an entry plan, which will lead to a report of entry findings, and which will lead to a strategy for district improvement. So we're, we're very deliberate in the work that we do, and we try to be very supportive, and as appropriate, a critical friend to the superintendents that we work with.
Thank you so much.
So just a little snippet.
That's great.
But I'm delighted to be here.
You're not traveling from Bedford all the time?
No.
Okay, just checking.
No, no. When I retired as a superintendent, I moved to Plymouth.
Oh, not so bad. Okay, great, great, great.
And Maureen's also working with the new superintendent in Middleborough.
In Middleborough.
So there's connections, and it's an opportunity for us to have lots of conversation.
Lots of conversation.
Excellent.
And with a second-year superintendent in Fall River, so.
That's right.
Yeah, we travel all over the place.
Okay, well, you're busy. Thank you.
Well, steeped in the area.
Well, thank you. We're happy that you're part of his team.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Yes, we have a question here.
Sure. I have to say that Maureen and I worked years and years ago when I had a lot of hair.
I knew that. I'm sitting here saying, I knew who this is.
And I would just say she was a highly respected teacher. She went the extra mile for the students, and a real quality person. So I don't know if she recognized me or not. But yeah, you got a, you got a good one.
Coming from Bob, that's big.
We started our careers together just a few years ago, right?
Yeah.
In Randolph, so, yes. I knew, I'm looking like, I go to these meetings, and sometimes I think, huh, hmm, looks familiar.
It's a small world.
It is a small world.
Uncannily small. So thank you.
So thank you.
All right. Okay, we're going to jump right into old business, FY22 budget updates and green.
Including in your packet is the general fund overview for FY22 year-to-date budget versus actual results, and the memo detailing the estimated excess and deficiency balance. On a year-to-date basis, we have an estimated addition of $154,000 to EandD, which would leave us at $2,010,603 of projected EandD. In accordance with 603 CMR 4106, school districts may retain approximately 5% of the proposed budget, leaving us with an allowable EandD cap of $2,117,035. The EandD projection includes the funding of deficits for the athletic user fund of $63,000, which is the standard deficit typical for our district pre-pandemic. We have also included an add-back of $250,000 from the regional transportation fund, where in 2021, the school committee set aside this funding. It needs to revert back into the operating fund after one operating year. Additionally, $184,347 was also added back into EandD, which was the amount voted to support the FY22 budget, where expenditures were originally anticipated to exceed the revenues. This amount was taken, taken away from our prior year EandD, certified EandD figure. It will be reversed in 2022, EandD computation, because instead, the actual revenues and expenditures would be utilized for this computation. Our EandD estimate is subject to final certification, which we expect will be submitted to the Department of Revenue no later than October 31st. The business office is still compiling final reconciliations and adjustments to these accounts. Once the reconciliations are complete, the school committee will provide, similar to last year, the components of what types of transactions make up the increase to EandD. You will also see the assessment sheet has been updated for significant changes in sources of revenues. The biggest recent change was Chapter 71 transportation aid, which came in $188,000 over the original budget, which was reflected in late June's deposit. Also, it is reflected here onto the two lines I noted as Note 4, where $184,347 we had originally anticipated utilizing this amount of EandD to balance the budget, where instead, it was not deemed necessary after we received surpluses of deposits and revenues and transfers into the operating fund. Overall, the operating fund appears to be in great financial position. That summarizes my FY22 report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Best of the community. Because we're up there on the EandD.
Yeah.
Okay.
Amazing.
I know. Remember when we had $8,000?
$70,000.
$70,000, sorry. So you want to launch into the next one?
Sure, FY23.
Yep.
For the FY23 year-to-date budget versus actual results are presented as well as an updated assessment sheet. The governor passed the final budget in late July. The assessment sheet represents changes to the final governor's budget for our state revenue sources. Chapter 70 increased $83,400 from our original budget estimates. We had originally budgeted $11,267.23, and $11,350,423 was the final figure. The $30 per pupil minimum aid increase was doubled to $60 this year. And the Chapter 71 transportation estimate was also increased to 85% from our originally budgeted 80%, for which we are estimated an increase of $123,576. During the spring, there were discussions with town administrators, and it was mentioned also at school committee meetings, there would be the possibility of reducing the town's assessment if the state revenue sources were increased to higher than originally planned amounts. As a result, I have included for the school committee's consideration, a vote request to amend the revenue sources of the budget. The town of Lakeville seems very committed to utilize this reduction in assessment indirectly towards the MSBA window and door project, and the town of Freetown seems open to exploring the idea of investing the savings back into the Freetown Elementary School building. Although there are no guarantees, it seems there is a gesture of goodwill. As a result, a vote is respectfully requested for the school committee to consider to amend the revenue sources of the budget as follows: to adjust the assessment of Lakeville from $16,295,504 to $16,173,971, a decrease of $121,533. To also adjust the assessment of Freetown from $13,106,655 to $13,012,715, a decrease of $93,940. Where total assessments decreasing of $215,473 are due to the following increases: Chapter 78 increase of $83,400 from $11,267,023 to $11,350,423. Chapter 71 transportation aid increase of $123,576 from $1,613,520 to $1,737,96. And school choice, a minimal increase of $8,497 from $375,000 to $383,497.
Thank you. So those are the three buckets that would be combined in a vote to offer the relief to the assessment to both communities. And I just want to point out that we have been really blessed with the cooperation and support of both towns through this process. It is my recommendation that somebody entertain a motion to include these funds. And I will say there was discussion or question, should the transportation reimbursement go into the revolving fund? And there's also, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's a bill on the governor's desk that increases a region, a school district's ability to dictate where transportation funds are expended and how. So where we already made a commitment to give back, if anything came in over, to give it back to these communities, I would hope that we would stick with that. And I don't think that we should be too concerned about adding anything to the revolving fund at this time. That's my personal feeling. I am open up to any, you know, open up to any of the suggestions. But I feel we are in a good place with both towns, and I personally would like to follow through on this and keep that relationship positive. Questions, anyone, or statements, comments? Yes?
The transportation increase, because what percentage are we at now as far as-
85.
85?
85% is-
Not 100.
Is the newly adopted rate by the governor. We had projected more of an 80% rate, thus the increase. And it's House Bill 596 that June is referring to. It is still sitting on the governor's desk, but it does allow the school transportation reimbursement fund to be spent without further appropriation. It allows us more flexibility to put those deposits into the fund without going back to the towns to ask for a blessing, to utilize those funds for a future year.
And keep in mind, when we went fully regional, we landed a time when everyone said 100%.
100%.
And did we ever, I think we saw it once. So I think having the revolving fund was a smart move on our part. But we're in a good position this year with our transportation budget, that I personally don't see any need to not hand that back over to the two communities. Did you have a comment?
We're just edging closer, edging closer to the promised amount.
Oh, don't, don't jinx it.
Yes, I agree with Eugene as far as just continuing to build that goodwill between the towns, and they've been fantastic with supporting us, right? But given the conversations, and again, this is just me throwing it out there, given the conversations we just had regarding class size and looking into how we can potentially add new teachers, does it make sense to opening up a conversation with the towns potentially, letting them know our needs in case we could hold on to that and put that through adding teachers?
Yeah, so my counter to that is that we have identified the way to do that, and that unfortunately, I think the understanding in the communities was that whatever we got, we would make sure to offset their assessments. There's nothing wrong, in fact, it's probably appropriate to have a conversation just to advise them on the situation, in my personal feeling. Anybody else? Barron?
I understand why we don't have bus lists and so forth.
Right.
Routes and so forth. But I really would like to hold on to that 123,576 until we see what the bus routes look like, if we're going to need another one, if we're going to lose one.
Do you have any kind of input on that, Mr. Strauss, I'm pleased?
So today, about 10 minutes ago, when did you receive it? We just received the bus routes.
Okay.
In fairness, they've been struggling the last few days with the loss of joy, and so, and they're trying to hire. And so we had a conversation with Kenny, and we are going to scrutinize some things we haven't scrutinized before in terms of how many are Tier 2, how many are Tier 3, are buses being fully utilized, we're asking for breakdowns. many are Tier 3, our buses being fully utilized, we're asking for breakdowns. I come from a district in which bus routes were reinvented every year. And with added structures in the community and students moving in particular areas, we can't just do the same old, same old. That's a year from now, I understand that, but we are in the midst, Kara and I are actually having these conversations already. So I don't, I don't see us needing to add unless we get an influx of students, I don't see that.
In which case, we have other sources of funds.
Right.
I mean, my fear is assurance is made, and the holdback could be badly interpreted. That's all.
Okay.
So do we have any idea what the length of buses are, perhaps? The bus routes are?
Length of bus routes?
The length, how long children will be?
So I will have that information, I will scrutinize it tonight after this meeting. Kenny literally just sent it to Renee, because we said we had a meeting tonight, and I will get that to you tomorrow.
This committee has been very vocal about making sure that our kids are not on the bus.
So.
An exorbitant amount.
One of the things, again, it's, it's early in our tenure here, so we almost had to see what was happening. You know, Bob and I had this conversation, we need to go slow to move fast, and so we're going to do a lot of evaluating, and I know that sounds kind of backwards, but that's the reality. We need to go slow for us to make these changes. These are big changes, even though they've been asked for for a long time. It's restructuring, and we have a good relationship with first student, we want to keep that relationship, so we need to really talk it through and not just put it on them and say change it. It wouldn't have been done in time anyway. I think there are a lot of things we need to look at in terms of busing, including special education, and I think there are a lot of conversations we have to have moving forward. So I'll get that to you tomorrow.
I'm just concerned about the community.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, yes, yes.
So to be clear, we had budgeted for 23 bus routes, and I think we're still looking at starting with, what, 24?
Correct.
So there could be a need to utilize additional transportation monies, but with this new bill coming out, we may be able to.
Probably move 20.
Right.
So last year, we used 24, if I'm correct?
We did use 20, we started with 23, and we added.
We had to add, that's right.
Early October.
There is some miscommunication as to, was there a directive to keep it at 24 prior to my arrival? And so, again, we're going to evaluate it all. My first concern, as yours is, is how far are our kids driving on the buses?
Yeah, we have some long routes.
Yep.
We need to make sure we understand how long those routes are, because especially for our elementary routes, they can.
Correct. We also have to look at the fact that we do have buses that are arriving late to Freetown Elementary. One bus in particular has been getting there late, so we are going to begin to track that. I didn't have any data. So my concern is if students are arriving, and Steve, you know, if students are arriving 15 minutes late and then need to eat, you're talking about a half hour of instructional time, times 180 days, we all know what the math is. So we have really got to rethink how we're looking at these bus routes.
I also think we have bus routes, or buses that are coming late to the elementary schools because of the domino effect.
Correct.
Some of those kiddos are waiting up to a half an hour for a bus after school.
Right.
Hope we can fix that, that would be great.
So, okay, I'll fix tomorrow. So, but the reality is, if I'm going to make a choice right now, I want to fix getting kids to school on time. Second piece is getting kids home earlier. That will be the second piece. We better take this step by step, I think.
I'm not going to put it out there, but there could be a couple of construction hiccups too.
When is that probably going to be done?
I know Steve has.
Steve, sorry.
No, I just, I can support the recommendation of the team.
Of the three.
And given, I'm intrigued by the bill on the Governor's desk.
Me too.
I am hopeful about that, given it could be a moot point, and I think we do, should honor, given the amount, honor our commitment to the towns.
Agreed.
And they've been great to work with, and then carry your efforts to the superintendent on the good faith efforts to give it back in some ways to the schools. I think it's a no-brainer to support this.
Thank you.
At this point, I mean, the transportation is obviously an issue, but given.
Yeah, but what we, the assurances we made.
Right.
That we have some flexibility, and we are doing this in-depth analysis of our routes and everything, that's great. Did you have something, Will?
Nope, I'm going to put my greed aside and make a motion.
What Kara said.
Do you want me to read it, or are we good?
Oh, I'm sorry, there's no more.
As long, I feel as long as the minutes reflect the language, thank you.
Kara, just speaking of funds, I'm just curious, do you know what the town has in the stabilization account?
Oh.
I do.
I know Will knows that number off the top. I don't have it off the top. I don't, I'm not sure of Lakeville either.
It's healthy.
They're both healthy, yeah.
Okay.
So with that being said, I'll make a motion to, what Kara said, make a motion to, I guess, return the sum of, Renee, you'll.
The assessment decrease?
We can just say.
Renee, you'll write it.
The assessment decrease?
Yeah, $250,473.
Adopt the change.
Is the total assessment decrease.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt that change.
No, second. Awesome. I have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, thank you for the detail too. So this is actually good news. Take it. Freetown vocational update.
Yeah, not much at this time. I know the town has set a date for October 18th for the special town meeting where there will be a vote. I think it's important to say that the vote at that meeting will specifically be for Freetown to join the Bristol Plymouth Vocational District as a member. All right, so the 18th, that's going to be voted on at the town, so there will be an invitation coming across desks for me shortly to be able to schedule a meeting, get that vocational subcommittee meeting together. We're going to come up with a one-pager as we discuss. I've gotten a couple of dates from Renee at Central Office, thank you so much, as far as us being able to get out and just kind of get that one-pager out to folks in order to get out and vote.
Excellent.
So that'll be voted on the 18th, so super important that we get the word out to the town's vote to be able to get out and support that.
And I would just add that we were a little concerned that they were going to try to really rush this vote. We feel it's tight anyway.
Correct.
But there, I think we can do a one-pager information piece, so we can get people, A, to the meeting and B, to vote. So, and thank you for your leadership on that, Will. New business, kind of kill bus routes, but let's do it, opening plans.
So we've already talked about bus routes, and I will get you that information. Bus routes will be posted on the website tomorrow.
All right.
So, but I will get you the details that you were asking for, Sherri, in terms of commute times. We are ready to rock and roll. We are excited. New teacher, or we had our retreat, which is always the beginning of the year from an administrative perspective. We do want to reiterate Maureen's comment. You know, I've been in education a long time and have been in administration for a long time, and I have seen phenomenal teams take a while to gel. It is not always easy, but we were actually talking about this, the seamless ability for the four of us has been a wonderful thing. We haven't had a lot of tap dancing to try and figure each other out. It's really, let's get to work, and we seem to certainly all have the same philosophy about kids first and how do we make this work? So that's been a real positive. The website is up, it is continually being monitored. Aspen is going to be rolling out to all parents on September 2nd, so that they will have schedules, and it will be consistent across the board. So all schools, Aspen will roll out for parents on September 2nd. Kids come back, as we know, on the 6th. New teacher orientation is the 29th and 30th. Sherri's going to talk a little bit. We have 38 hires and counting, looks like a few more. So that's been a major source of central administration's time. We have worked really hard to, as soon as someone is interviewed, people are vetted almost immediately, and they're in my office that day. So, because we were losing people to wait in three or four days, you know, as principals, sometimes it gets to Central Office, it gets lost. And we've really worked hard to talk about this community. We've had a number of people coming in from much higher-paying districts, which says a lot about what we're doing, and everybody continues to say the same thing, which is, I'm coming here for the reputation of this district. So that's who you want to bring in, without question. So that's really positive. First day for all teachers is the 31st. We will have a short convocation, opening day. I don't know, are you speaking?
I don't know if we need to say anything other than welcome.
Okay.
Because Steve and I were both planning on joining.
Okay, and I will introduce.
They don't need to hear from us.
Any of the school committee, and then I'm going to speak for a bit. We've got a motivational speaker for a little while, a few minutes, and then they're getting back into their classrooms, which is what teachers need to do. They don't need to spend a lot of time with administration.
Unless they're really good Danish.
They'll be good Danish, no question about that. So we are excited. Last night, I attended the new student, new student and freshman orientation at the high school. The administration did, did a really good job, but I thought what, I think struck a chord with me was how passionate our Laker leaders were. They were simply outstanding, and there were lots of teachers, guidance counselors, they were great, and I do not mean to diminish anything they did. Nicole Graff did an outstanding job talking about our academics. All three administrators were great, but our kids were simply remarkable. And it's really the first time I've gotten to see our kids in a large group, and so that was really positive, met some wonderful parents, and everybody's nervous and excited, which is what the beginning of school is supposed to be.
Yep, awesome.
So Sherri, you want to talk about new hires at all?
Sure, if you'd like me to talk about that now.
That's fine.
Yeah, so we have, at the time that I pulled numbers, we had 38 new staff with three internal shifts from different grade levels to different positions, including nurses and teachers and secretaries and psychologists and par educators. Barbara Flanders is going to continue to run our mentor program for us, so she and I have met several times over the summer and have done lots of talking and planning. They are starting the day on Monday with the things that are going to create the most calm for them, right? They're going to get their fobs and their Chromebooks, and they're going to get trained on how to get into their systems and how to see their kids and print rosters, and then they're going to get some time to look at curriculum, and they're going to get time to get signed on to any platforms that they need to. The curriculum leaders were wonderfully receptive to coming for their new staff on that time, so they could sit with them and share folders with them and make sure that they were feeling comfortable for that start of school. So the two days are really geared around making sure that our staff feels welcomed and that they are feeling confident going into the first weeks of school.
And getting into their classroom, which is day two.
After they have their Chromebook.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Questions, anyone? Thank you.
I have a quick one.
Go ahead.
No, please. That number 38, is that a, is that a typical number for this district? Or is that high?
That's high.
Okay.
But some of that's attrition.
Some of it's attrition. That includes a number of paraprofessionals, it's not just teachers, school psychologists. We added the math and interventionists, which we were able to fill. Pardon me?
The specialists?
Math specialists.
Yes.
So I think I'll have a better idea next year. This is concerning every district across there, are people who are saying, I'm done. I don't know what is happening in Quincy, but you know, people last minute are saying. The good news is, is we haven't had trouble filling positions, and I think, I look at it that way. There are a couple of people who were, I know three or four who left because they wanted to be closer to home. Their travel time was an hour, hour and 15 minutes, and so that I understand, a couple left education for good, some retired, so, but we're going to keep track on that. And one of the things we're going to do, again, we started late for this, for this part of our job, is to do exit interviews and really see why people are leaving, and really drill down into some conversations. But there wasn't a lot of surprises, a couple, but not a lot.
And there are other districts that are really struggling.
Oh, I'm sure.
It's, it is tough, to your point, and I think, you know, that the National Association has commented on some of the social-emotional issues that made it more stressful in schools as well. So there's a plethora of reasons why we're having some challenges filling slots, but I think, I think there's been a pretty good move to get all the right people in our place.
Yeah, absolutely. The other thing to keep in mind, and Steve, you know this as a principal, is there are districts around the Commonwealth and across the country that are changing qualifications.
Yes.
That are saying, you don't need to be certified, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, we have to do that.
We have not had to do that, and I really don't want to do that, because it worries me that we're throwing people in who are not ready at all with no experience. So we've hired some really good people, and we're excited. Now we just need to mentor.
Right. Do we still have a lot to go through here, team? We did the opening?
Yes.
Okay. The summer programs review, some of us were, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Should I listen to you, because I'd like to make a motion that we table this until next month when Lisa is here.
When Lisa's president.
And is here and.
It really was for informational purposes only, anyway. It really was just to let people know, and I'm sure you know, the outstanding work that went on over the summer.
Yep.
But yeah, if everyone's happy with tabling it, we can table it, because then we'll have the source.
Right, we've already asked them, they're set to come.
And they want to come in for talent.
They want to come.
Yes.
Yeah, and they should come, because they should showcase, they are amazing.
This was simply, this was simply information numbers.
Right, okay. We get to say that.
Prior to these numbers, I had already asked them to present.
For September.
I knew the first meeting, there was a lot with three new people.
Right.
So I knew you would want some numbers, but the rest, they will give their report in September.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to table this until next, until September 21st, or the next school committee meeting?
Yeah, I don't know if we necessarily need to table it, I mean, this is informational purposes only, anyway, we're going to have them on the agenda for the next meeting. You good with that?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, good. Fat Cousins.
So Fat Cousins called us, Renee and I, three or four weeks ago, was very interested in making a donation and giving back to the schools, both in supplies, and then on August 31st, they are going to have a night in which anyone who goes and mentions the district, 10% of their, of their bill goes directly to us, and we will determine, once we determine the amount of money that they give us, we then bring it to the school committee, it's voted on that we accept it, and then we make the decision, along with Fat Cousins, as to where the money is going to go.
So we don't have to take any action on this at this time?
No.
This is just so people know of the generous offer here?
Yep.
And what happens with it is TBD.
Yep.
We don't even know how much they're going to get, so, okay, thank you for that.
Fat Cousins going to, excuse me, is Fat Cousins going to advertise this? This is going to go on the website, is it?
They are going to advertise it.
They're going to do it.
We are not, I'm not, I personally don't believe, if we start advertising.
Thank you.
On our website, we're going to be doing that.
That will be, that's a black hole, not good.
Right, right.
Yep. Okay, the, we have a contract now for the paraprofessionals and secretarial staff for the 22 to 25 years, three-year contract. for the twenty-two to twenty-five years, three-year contract. We, it was not a, not a super challenging negotiation. But we, we arrived at what we believe is fair contract, and I believe that they have supported it. I don't know, Will, you have anything to add on that?
No, just, just an unbelievable group of professionals. It really is. A pleasure to sit down with and negotiate with and, and, yeah. It was easy peasy.
So it's a two or three and a three is what they ended up with over the, over the years. And again, you know, keeping in mind that we also had given a one-time benefit at the end of the year. So it actually boosted them up a little bit. And I'm hearing, I think from you, Mr. Strauss, that we're very, very much closer on a par with neighboring districts in terms of what we pay these individuals who do an awful lot of work in the district. So I feel comfortable about that. I am now going to entertain a motion to accept and finalize this contract.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension, motion carries. Thank you for that. Food service update.
Do you want me to go? So a letter was sent out by Andrea Fay to all parents. Massachusetts is the fifth state, I believe. That is providing universal free meals, breakfast for where there is breakfast being served and lunches for all students, which is a wonderful thing, it's a wonderful thing for our community. It is important to know, and this was part of the letter, that the household application for free and reduced-priced meals, we're, we are encouraging our parents to fill out. Kara can talk a little bit about the impact on what happens if parents don't fill that out.
Yes, so our district could be impacted with other grant funding if, if we have families that are not filling this out. It helps collect the data for the income levels, if you will, for Freetown and Lakeville residents. So it does assist us in getting grant funds, which then helps us offset taxes. So if you could please try to fill those out as you would in a normal year and return them through our district, that would be wonderful.
That's all, that big pile of papers that comes home on day one. So, okay, so that messaging is going to happen in each of the buildings, I'm assuming.
So Andrea sent it out, it is on the website. I will be putting it in my message to the community. We will continue to put that out, so there will be constant communication on that.
Well, it's, it's good news because I think people have become accustomed to that.
Right.
So I actually am quite proud that we're going to continue to do that on so many levels. Go ahead.
It's just, just a comment, it's a one-year extension, it's just for this year only.
Correct.
Yeah.
Which is why this paperwork is so important to fill out for next year.
That makes sense, yep.
So we're looking for every single family to fill out this?
To do what they would traditionally do.
There's guidelines on the paperwork.
There are guidelines as to who.
That say, you know, that have household incomes. But anyone could fill it out, see if they qualify. If they're unsure, they should fill it out because they may qualify.
The other thing that it does do is if for some reason the Commonwealth has to back away from this approval, let's say mid-year, because they could do nine C cuts or other types of reductions, it would allow a flip of the switch, meaning those that would have normally been eligible for free or reduced lunch would.
Continue.
Continue to be.
Yep, good point. Will, we're going to pray no nine Cs.
Absolutely.
Uh huh. So this doesn't require any of that, this is just information. Class size update. We added, here it is.
So in front of you are anticipated for, for September. We are in good shape in most of our classrooms. We had a discussion in regard to both third grades. And that's really the one area where there's consistent belief that our numbers are, are high. So
Yep.
We're looking to solve that.
Yep, yep, we, third grade frequently is a challenge. So we're going to be looking at what we can do to keep those. This school committee has been adamant from, for as long as I can remember, that class sizes need to be at a very meaningful level, which is smaller than some of these numbers, and that we have adequate paraprofessional support in all the classrooms, so.
Ashley will be talking about paraprof.
And she'll probably get a few questions.
The district. I will say that after our conversation, we will be, my goal is to have these sessions taken care of for the first day of school.
Excellent.
Maybe interviewing on Sunday, but that's okay.
Just bring the Danish.
Yep.
Be all set.
Yep.
Thank you for that. Any questions?
In a worst-case scenario, do you have people in the district already as employees?
That's Plan B. So what I want to try and prevent as much as possible are transitions. And students moving from one classroom for X amount of weeks to another classroom is not healthy for students developmentally. And, and it becomes, why is this person moving? Why isn't this person moving? This person likes this classroom? It's not fair to kids. And, and so we, we will do everything we can for day one. It's very possible that it's not the official teacher for day one, but it will be, it will be pretty quick.
No, that's a very good question. No matter what, you know, if we have to do some jiggling, it is, it can be disruptive, so.
Right.
We can avoid that disruption, especially at the beginning of the year.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I would imagine there's precedent for this, this isn't the first time this has happened.
Correct, we've had to do this juggling. But that's why I think the goal was to make sure that on day one, we're ready to rock and roll with it, so. Okay, any other questions or comments? Because we can go into reports, we have this incredible team here that we're going to hear from.
Just a few updates here on the MSBA project being the first. The schematic and feasibility design portion of the Assawamset Windows and Doors Replacement Project is now completed. There will be an MSBA virtual board meeting on August thirty-first at ten a.m. where each of you has received an invitation. I believe I need to respond by tomorrow afternoon end of business if you wish to be part of that virtual meeting. There is also going to be a Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, August twenty-ninth at six p.m. in Lakeville at the police station where the owner's project manager and the designer of the project will provide a presentation. The presentation will be an opportunity to begin educating the community about the nature of the project. The presentation will discuss what the existing conditions are as it relates to Assawamset's windows and doors. There will be pictures of some of the issues identified as well as what the new windows and doors would look like. A description of the new windows and doors will be provided as well as the project schedule, the project budget, and the anticipated reimbursement. As it relates to the Assawamset Playground, additionally at Assawamset, included in the final governor's budget in Appropriation seven zero zero eight dash one 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 six, through the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism, the Massachusetts Marketing Partnership, there has been one hundred thousand dollars designated to fund the town of Lakeville-owned Assawamset Elementary School Playground, which would cover the replacement of various playground components, those that are damaged or currently in need of repair. This was a result of Town Administrator Ari Sky working directly with Senator Roderick's on this funding. I would like to thank both Ari and Senator Roderick's on their support and efforts. I did verify today through the Office of Massachusetts Travel and Tourism that the one hundred thousand dollars would need to be expended by June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, unless extended through legislative approval. When working with the town on this request, we were asked to present two figures. The first being an estimated cost to repair existing equipment, which was the one hundred thousand dollars, and the second, an estimated cost to replace the playground. The estimated costs obtained back in May were the following. The cost to repair was ninety-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, and the cost to replace the playground was six hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. That cost to replace does not include site preparation. The town has today expressed an interest in exploring, looking for additional funds to cover more than just the one hundred thousand dollars. So the conversation will continue. Redesign and replacement of equipment provided from the potential vendor we utilize for a quote is ADA compliant and meets all Mass Access Board guidelines. This company does not allow any equipment to be sold that does not meet ADA guidelines. The Massachusetts Access Board is the stricter of the two guidelines when considering accessibility. This vendor has also done a number of inclusive playgrounds. An example are slides that may be wheelchair accessible. I believe there is a question surrounding ADA accessibility for the Assawamset Playground. Since this is a town-owned property, I would suggest as a next step that we check with the town to see if there have, have been any determinations made or perform any studies in relation to ADA compliance at the playground. And for summer projects, you will see an update in your packet being addressed by the facilities team. The custodial, maintenance, and ground staff has had a very busy summer, especially considering that we had a late June closing of school. There has been a time crunch to complete these projects. Some of the projects include stripping and waxing the floors, pothole repairs throughout the campus grounds, carpet cleaning, and various other repairs. I would like to thank the custodial and maintenance staff for their hard work this summer. Additionally, in your packet are some estimated fund balances. I have provided a list of some of our primary funds. These are estimated fund balances as we are still working on final reconciliations, but you'll see the fund balances for school choice, circuit breaker, school lunch, and community recreation. And just as a side note, I did break out community recreation so you could see the components between Kids Cafe before and after school versus pool and other types of programs. And for ESR, we will once again be providing some amendments for both ESR two and ESR three funds, which are presented in the packet. The focus will be on spending ESR two funds first, which will expire September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. For ESR three, the district is looking at adjustments to one-time premium payments for recently negotiated contracts as well as adjustments for math specialists based on individuals actually hired for the positions. That would conclude my report, I'd be happy to take any questions.
I just want to say thank you for the research on the Americans with Disabilities Act play area that did come up at a SEATAC meeting, rightfully so. And kudos to, to Lakeville as well for looking at that, sure.
Thank you too, Kara.
Yes.
You're amazing.
She is.
We think, we think Renee's amazing, so now it's between the two of you. Really, thank you so much for all of that. I echo what Jean said because that's so important for us.
So we do have more work to do with the town on this, but we will certainly be digging our heels into it.
Beautiful, that's a wonderful thing. Well, thank you, any other questions, comments? Okay, then we'll move on to Terry. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a quick one.
Go.
Updates, update, I'm sorry, upgrade student information system, is that SIS?
Yes.
That's the same thing as SIS, okay.
Yes.
Thank you, I like it when you spell it all out.
Yes.
Thank you. Terry?
Well, I have had a wonderful summer getting to know people and places and locations and really falling in line with my vision of being visible and connected to the staff. I've met students and staff and leaders, and I've had such a wonderful welcoming experience as I have transitioned into this position. So thank you for having just wonderful people in our district. The connections and interconnections have really laid a foundation for me. Renee, Alan, Kara, Ashley, myself, we have just kind of woven our lives together in the office there, but there's an extension in that central office that they deserve a shout-out as well. Meg and Joanne have been integral in helping me blend and learn things. Kara's staff has been wonderful. So the central office team, Ashley's team, Jen, Seabury, and I, myself, Danielle, Meredith, it's just been wonderful being a part of this transition. With that said, I've also spent time with each of our principals in the buildings, walking their buildings, talking about their vision for the buildings, talking about staff and, and where they're headed. And so just learning kind of the foundations that they've already set. And then we have offered three curriculum leader meetings, reached out to the curriculum leaders so they could meet us, so they could share some of their roles and capacities, what they see as their time, best use of their time. Twenty-three out of twenty-five of them were able to carve out a, an hour for us and, and we, we kept it right, I think we kept it right to that time. And they were just wonderful to just share, and they've sent emails in, in between now, and Julie Mills and I have an ongoing conversation, she's the science lead here at the high school. So the curriculum leaders have really stepped up and are already communicating wonderfully about their teams and their visions for their teams. So just a really strong group of leaders. The principals, most of the principals were able to join those meetings, so we were able to have the conversation and then share that joint focus for their buildings. So it was a good shared leadership approach. Just like I said here, they just growth mindsets across the board. People asking, how can we improve? Where can we stretch and grow our edges? That's been wonderful. You tabled summer programming, but we do have the Jump Start Literacy and Math Program that's funded through Title I. I can just hit on that real quick?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So we had seventy-two students participate, twelve staff. They were all positive and energetic. The first day, as I welcomed families into the parking lots and showed kids and introduced some of their teachers, the parents were so thankful for that opportunity. And the kids were a little nervous the first days, but by the third day, they were running in the building. Each child went home with a very age-appropriate novel or book. The time that, if you haven't been into Mr. Bossio's class for Jump Start, you are missing out because he is wonderful with the students, and it's amazing to watch his energy level. But all of our staff, we had veteran staff and we had brand-new staff that were double, double-timing. They'd walk over to Kids Cafe in the afternoon and, and work there. So you can tell they just love being with our students. Last week, I talked to students and they're like, no, can't we come next week? It was, so it was really nice to just have those interactions and see them so joyful about being here in the summer during some of our hottest weeks.
Yes.
I, I know you're just anxious to hear about the delivery of materials. There is two pallets of Wonders material in each of our buildings. Bethany and I went through the AES materials, sorted them out, started, you know, determining what the teachers wanted to look at for the first training day and what needed to be held off so that we weren't overwhelming and pushing a lot out at the first stop. So that's been done, I'm working with both Liz and Mike on Friday to do the same thing. So the materials are here, there are some that are back-ordered, but the basics of the program and the ability for them to see the cards that'll be used with the kids in the, in the groups and the centers are, are here. And I know the teachers are going to be excited about seeing those. And we also have our new Positive Action, SEL program that's been delivered, and that's all the way up through fifth grade. Those are nice convenient boxes, but they're going to get training on nine-one for those. Again, those are both going to be methodical rollouts of the program. So the teacher is having time to look at what's there, decide how to blend it with what they've been doing, and then make those shifts throughout the year as they learn more and more about it. Let's see, oh, homeschool numbers. Homeschool numbers are fluctuating, it's not surprising. People are coming back to the building. So the secretaries and myself are really working at updating our lists. We've gotten a lot of letters this week and people registering this week, so I won't have really final numbers until September, but I will have some updated numbers. I did give some information here just so you knew, like, where students were approved so far and where students were moving back into the buildings. So it's exciting to see that we have, you know, ten students at the time that I did the numbers, which was mid-last week, re-enrolling in our buildings, and I've had several more over the weekend. So that will be updated in September. We talked about the new staff orientation training already, and then our first full-day professional development kind of came together pretty simply. People are getting Aspen training, they're getting their Wonders training, they're getting Positive Action training. We are having the whole district see Positive Action, even though it's being implemented in pre-K to five, because the middle school and the high school principals and I both thought it would be advantageous. And even Kim, and, not even Kim, but Kim in Transportation and the nurses and the secretarial staff wanted to see what's being used so that they can use some of that vocabulary and learn what the kids are learning so that it transfers to all the nooks and crannies. So they're going to get an overview of the, of the material in, on that first day. And everyone is not doing the same thing. So our math teachers are not getting Wonders training, they are going to be working with STEM scopes and some inquiry-based science on that first day.
It was really important, Terry and I had lots of conversations, Ashley as well. It was really important, Terry and I had lots of conversations, Ashley as well, that we start to develop a PD plan that makes sense for everyone, from our nurses to our secretaries to our paras. Not everyone needs the same information. There is in terms of alestrating, in terms of system management, all of that, but traditionally, and we've said this multiple times, we start looking at PD for the following year in February and March, so that when teachers leave in June, they know the PD plan. We came in late, and so, but the CLs have been great, the information we've gotten, so I give Terry a lot of credit for how quickly she's gotten things up and running. But we'll say to all of you that reports are going to be a little bit longer, simply because I've given the directive, if you will, that more information is better to all of you. And I'm not saying we're staying here long, 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 but...
No, we're not, but we appreciate the information.
But there will be information that I think hasn't been given as much before.
Right. No, we're grateful, we're all grateful for that.
And the PD committee was a part of the work that's being done for 9-1 as well. So it is just wonderful to have just a team of excited and passionate educators in every role. So the MPAS raw data was released and is still embargoed, so there's not information that I can provide there. However, the schools are using the item analysis in some of their early conversations, which is allowed to be looked at because it has no student data on it, it just, which problems were missed most and what the incommence was for them. So I'll have more on that for the next one. And then in the funding section there, I did note what grants we've been awarded so far. We have the $48,000 for the Early Grades Literacy Grant continuing. That's going toward work in pre-K to 5 and our work with Lori Motto from the state. There was a decrease this year in title grant funding of $27,192, and as you can see from the differences, it primarily came in Title I calculations. They're no longer using a 1.6 calculation, and they have altered that, so it did decrease our amounts this year. Title IV did come up a little bit, so we're pretty sure that we can make things work.
That's what counts. Yeah. That is kind of a hit, though.
Terry?
So let's start, I'm going to go backwards. I have a few questions here. The early grant literacy, the Early Grades Literacy Grant, $48,000, wasn't that over $100,000 last year?
It was not. Actually, it was less last year, if I remember, if I remember my numbers. I don't have the number here, I should have brought it, but we actually applied for more this year. That funded less time with Lori, and we're expanding the time with Lori this year.
For all three schools, all three elementarys?
For all three schools, yes.
Okay. Tell me what the difference is between Aspen and SIS?
Aspen and SIS are actually the same.
Same thing.
And, yeah, and so basically, I'd hit that in several different areas, so I didn't want to, we had talked about it in different areas, so I didn't include that as a part of that communication. But Aspen is a Student Information Service.
And how does that, how does Aspen differ from what we've been using?
From Redder.
Yeah.
From Redder. It's much more user-friendly, it's much more user-friendly for students and parents. So, and Caitlin and I were laughing about this, technically, any parent can determine, more so at the high school and middle school, whether or not their student is on time to class or not. I mean, it can get down to those materials because parents have 24-hour access to it. Students have 24-hour access to their grades, so they can see their grades updated, they can see what they're missing. We are working on the piece in terms of standards-based report cards and that question, but it's a better system in terms of student management, so things such as discipline, things such as bullying reports, it's much easier to find, it's much easier for our guidance department to be able to transfer all that information from Naviance into Aspen and send it off to colleges. So consistently across the board, it's much more user-friendly. You use Aspen, correct?
Correct. It's a great product.
It's like a hub, so it also allows other systems to communicate well with it. So SNAP can communicate well with it. We're actually doing single sign-ons with Wonders, the new program, so that teachers don't have to give kids individual logins, and we don't have to manually roster, so we're able to roster students like with just a nightly CSV file that happens automatically, seamlessly.
Wasn't this favorable financially as well?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
And it also encompasses a special education program for IEP and 504 writing, which we're not jumping on board with right away this year, but will be eventually all part of the whole Aspen program, which is wonderful, so accessible for everybody.
And this doesn't ask for any student surveys or anything, does it?
No.
No.
We're not surveying anyone?
No.
But we have a policy, which is why I'm not sure if these folks have gone through the policy.
Why?
But just, I do remember from last winter, there was some creativity in Kara's part, I believe through the ESR monies, if I'm not mistaken, that allowed us to transition to this, but it's a great product and...
That's cool. We were able to make the connection to remote learning and COVID and getting that, more of that interaction with the parents electronically, if you will, to tap into the ESR funds.
One more question. Yeah, tell me about Training the Trainer, it happened a couple of days ago.
Yes. So Aspen came in and trained our leaders from the buildings that are going to run the trainings on the 9-1 training day so that they're in person. We had 14 staff in there, and I had created skeleton presentations so that there'd be a cohesiveness and that they could build their presentation. So they learned the things that, you know, their grade levels, so they got into their groups. So they learned to show staff how to set up their homepage on Aspen, you can personalize it a little bit. They showed where the attendance would be taken, how to get into grade books. The secondary staff is very excited about printing their rosters and getting their grade book categories set up. So the secondary staff focused a lot on those slides, so we basically came away that day with two presentations that each of the teams will use in respective buildings.
The other piece, we're talking about teacher hires, 17 of the teachers that we hired from other districts have Aspen training, so they've used Aspen. So what happens is they're coming in as new teachers, and they're going to be able to work with teachers, which is a great way to kind of get to know some other teachers, which they probably wouldn't before, so they're excited about that.
Sort of backdoor mentoring.
Right.
I like that.
And Ally Cassidy, our new tech specialist, is very well-versed in Aspen and has been answering a bunch of questions district-wide for all of us, so...
Well, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Happy to have you. Ashley?
All right, so I'm so excited to share my report because I know that it seems a little bulky, but I'm hoping that it gives you all the information that you may be looking for in hopes for future planning. So first, I just want to second what Alan had said in terms of transitioning into the position this year, where three-fourths of us are brand-new to the admin team. We have absolutely gelled, and it has been seamless. I just, I can walk into their room, I can joke around, I can be myself, but then I can also have very serious, more professional conversations, so it has been a very nice summer working together. It has been busy, though, very, very busy, and I have been happy to have a warm welcome from so many of my colleagues, whether in surrounding districts or from local collaboratives or even DCF workers that I have worked with in the past six years here in the district. Very excited about my next step, I guess I should say. So, you know, we're going to kick off the year, as Terry and Alan have said, with the new teacher orientation. I am excited to present on Monday to the new teachers and staff coming on board to give a quick 45-minute overview of special education, roles, responsibilities, expectations, just a little bit of an overview. Introduce myself, I'm not sure if that's been something that has been done in the past, so I'm excited about that. And Meredith and Danielle, who I'll talk about in a moment, will also be joining me for that opening day for them. And then to follow up with that, on Wednesday, when we kick off opening day, we actually all come together as a collective whole in the high school, and then the teachers go their own way, but I'm, again, fortunate enough on Thursday to have all of the district-wide special ed staff to meet as a whole group for a nice chunk of time to go through what we're calling an IEP boot camp, which will encompass my expectations for IEP and compliance for this year, as well as overall responsibilities and expectations, so the district is consistent pre-K to 12. As I've shared with many of you, going into the fall, my main goal is to be visible and establish myself in the elementary school specifically, as I've already, I guess, laid my roots in 4 through 12. I really want to make sure that my focus is on the primary grade level so that I can get to know the programs, the staff, the teachers, the kids, more importantly. And really just to have an open-door policy, as I've shared with you again, my plan is to set up time twice a month, if not more, in the buildings and have that open-door policy where teachers, administrators, even students, if they like, could come in and talk to me about any questions, concerns, or just sit down and talk about family and friends, whatever the case may be. One of my other big goals is just to make sure that we have transparency amongst all stakeholders and ensure that you all especially know what's going on in the Office of Student Services, so like I said in my introduction, so we can move forward in a positive path and we can plan for a future for Freetown Lakeville and our special education population. So let me begin by first going through our special ed administrators going into the new year. So obviously, you know me, Director of Student Services. I will also this year be the special ed administrator for the high school, so grades nine through post-grad, serving our students that roughly go from 14 to age 22, and I'm also the added district coordinator for the district. Meredith Foy is working right beside me as our pre-K coordinator, as well as our kindergarten through third-grade administrator, and works at FES and AES, as well as with our local early intervention programs. And then Danielle Johansson is who we hired this summer to replace myself as the 4 through 8 administrator, so I'm very excited, and she spent the last year under my direct supervision while she went through her coursework at Bridgewater State, so I'm very excited about her joining our team. And they've all been very actively involved this summer, working all hands on deck for hiring processes, outlining expectations moving forward, and just preparing for the new year ahead. We did have a very smooth, actually, extended school year program. It's housed at Grays, and our dates go from July 5th to August 4th, so it is five weeks, which has been consistent with the past couple of years. It consisted of 16 teachers, 18 paraprofessionals, a school nurse, OT, speech, PT, and a reading teacher. And one of the things in my years as administrator at the 4 through 12 level is that there have been some parent vocalizations of what they would like to see in regards to improvements with the extended school year program, so I am working on finalizing a parent feedback form, which has actually been asked of me from some parents in the district, that we gather some data and look at what they would like to see moving forward, as well as what local school districts are doing, to make sure that we're comparing equally. So you can see here, I went through, and I'm not going to go through every single group, but I outlined every section of the ESY program that was offered, and I can highlight that I made an error really quickly on page one, that the FES sub-separate, eight kids were eligible and seven attended, so I apologize for that error. I caught that when I was preparing today. But if we look on page two, when it breaks down the more higher-level students in Grays as well as the middle school and high school, you can see that there's definitely a drop-off in regards to participation, and I'm really looking for some parent feedback on to why, as to why. I do know from parents that they did choose to opt out. The reasons, whether it was vacationing, are really unknown right now, so I'm looking for that feedback. Just working in the last six years here in the district, I do notice in IEP meetings when we recommend extended school year services to families, at the secondary level where they get into the middle and high school, students don't want to participate anymore. They don't want to spend their summers coming to summer school, they look at it as more of a punishment, although the older they get, you know, it's more important for us to put in those remedial skill-building pieces. So I look forward to working on how we can get families more involved as we move forward, but the turnout was good. Any questions on ESY, or do you want me to go through and then we can circle back to overall questions? So I'm going to do my own staffing update. I know that Terry touched upon it a little bit. One of the things that I'm so, so excited about, and I think that you guys will be too, is that we have secured within the first two weeks of July, a school psychologist. So I know that was a big challenge in the last year and a half, maybe even two years, but we had a very great recommendation from a well-known psychologist that worked with us in prior years, and she sent us this psych, and she's amazing, and I'm so excited for her to start with us. So now we have three psychs, which I'll get into in just a few moments, which will be spread out district-wide, which is amazing. We also have a district BCBA maternity coverage that we have all set. We've secured coverage through our local collaborative, which I'm very excited about. Asawamset, there were no new hires, so that is great, that looks good. And Freetown Elementary, there's a couple that we're still struggling with here. We did hire two new teachers for inclusion, and we still are looking for a program teacher at the elementary level, the pre-K through K. And then one of the paraprofessionals, which I listed as a vacancy, is now prepared to sign, so we're just waiting for her to sign and get on board. So that's exciting news. There are also no new hires at Grays, which is wonderful to hear. The middle school, we had four new hires, so there was a big turnover this year at the middle school, which was unfortunate, one of which was because Danielle Johansson moved into an administrative role, so that's exciting. And the other, like Alan had said, we had a teacher that moved because the commute was better for her closer to home than driving the hour and 15 minutes to Freetown Lakeville back and forth. So that is all secured. Jack has worked very hard with myself this summer to get all those positions secured, so this is wonderful. We even got the one-year maternity leave covered, which is definitely a hard position to fill. And the high school is still a work in progress, so we did get a new hire for inclusion, but as of this morning was a resignation. So we are going to be posting for that probably as early tomorrow, and there's flies zipping around me. And we're also still looking for a life skills teacher. However, we are fortunate to have three teachers at the high school for the life skills program. In our numbers, we actually had two students move out, so there is some wiggle room, and we might be combining some classrooms just to make things a little bit easier and have some familiarity with the teaching staff. And then the social-emotional teacher we were looking to fill, which was also a vacancy, and we have a young lady that is waiting to sign for that as well, so very exciting there. As you know, on August 2nd, I met with the CPAC along with Alan as a meet and greet for both myself and him as superintendent, and we have invited the CPAC to join the school committee meetings moving forward, so I look forward to having Melissa and Jess joining us either together or separate. I'm not sure yet, we're working out those details, but I believe they're going to be joining us starting in September. And what I've done here is I've tentatively outlined the dates for all of the CPAC meetings for the year, which Jess and Melissa have sent to me, and you can see that the first two meetings, I will be leading parent trainings for the parents' rights and responsibilities, as well as a similar IEP boot camp, if you will, but for the parent version of IEP and 504. So those will take place in the October meeting, in the November meeting, and I invite you and encourage you to attend so that you can observe and be there for feedback from parents. Okay, so this is the big meat and potatoes going forward here. So I've gone ahead and reported out on our special ed numbers and staff moving into the 22-23 school year as of last week, so this has already shifted a little bit, but I don't have the numbers in front of me for what they are as of right now, but plan on updating them every school committee meeting so you can see the growth over the course of the school year. What I also did is I took a snapshot from Ellen Harrington's reports five years ago from the 2017 start, just as a comparison, a side-by-side comparison as to where we were in 2017 and where we've grown. So you can see specifically, AES and FES has been quite a jump, whereas Grays, FLMS, and even the high school have kind of remained in similar numbers. I've also gone ahead and included the current staffing that we have going into the new school year, and in looking at the class sizes, you can see that our second grade numbers at Asawamset are just as large as the second grade numbers in class size. It's definitely a big grade level for both overall student population and special ed needs. I did go through as well, and just referenced on my own personal notes, if any of you have any questions about what staffing looked like in the 2017 time where those numbers were like that, so if you have specific... numbers were like that. So if you have specific questions after I'm done reporting, I would welcome um, any of those, so I can answer that and and we can do a compare and contrast if you would like. On page five, I also went through and just looked at our out of district numbers, which have decreased over the last couple of years, which is exciting news. And then I also went through and I broke down uh, students and where they are placed, in case you have any questions on the local um, area schools that we use for special Page six of my reports jumps into the paraprofessional assignments. Uh, this again is a snapshot going into the 2223 school year. So um, at the end of the year, before I was technically assigned, I had met with all of the principals as part of our uh, para listing and needs to look at what what things were going to look like going into the new year. And together, in collaboration with one another, we come up with a list of assignments for each building and what vacancies there will be, or what positions are anticipated going into the new school year. So again, I did reference back in 2017. I believe that was the year that uh, the grade level para assignments were put into place. And I'm happy to report that at that time, there were seven grade level paraprofessionals at SE FES and AES, and are still uh, intact with seven paraprofessionals for grade level at AES and FES. And then I did a breakdown of special education paras, and then special education paras that are assigned to students. So those that are one to ones, one to twos, or one to threes, uh, totaling a number of 68 paraprofessionals district wide. And the last piece that I have here in terms of snapshots is our evaluations entering into the 2223 school year. And we'll be talking a lot about this this year, uh, only because our evaluation numbers are so high. And I know last year, Ms. Ramsden did focus on evaluations because that was a concern of the school committee. And in looking at the 2122 evaluations, that is very, very high. So that's 325 average, and I split that between three psychs, which we really didn't even have three psychs last year. So if we were to have three psychologists last year, it would have been averaging about 108 evaluations. And going through interviews this year, psychologists always ask, what is the average number of annual evaluations? And they're looking for under 70 as a heavy caseload. So expecting 108 evaluations for each psychologist is very heavy. And you can see the elementary numbers are very high, and I think that is a result of parent concerns coming out of COVID still. And I expect that this year, just like last year, is going to be equally as concerning. Uh, whereas when we first came back, it was not as high as we expected, because I think that everybody was kind of feeling their way back in, and a lot of students chose to be either remote or home or virtual. So um, that will be interesting to track the data moving forward. But starting in September, we do have quite a few evaluations already in uh, waiting in the wings. So at least we have a full psychological staff ready to jump on board and get started. And last but not least, um, I have spent the summer planning for the tiered focus monitoring visit, which is the DESI visit, which will occur onsite in February of 2023. The dates are to be determined. Um, I actually have a planning meeting the third week in September with the DESI to outline what the expectations are going to be for the site visit, what they're looking for, and the dates that they will actually be on campus. They are going to focus on special ed and civil rights. Uh, so I did address that at the CPAC meeting as well, because there were some concerns shared about ADA compliance, which we'll come up with a civil rights piece. So we want to make sure that we're just aware of that going into the new school year and what might come out of uh, the visit from the state, looking at all of the buildings and the accessibility piece. Moving forward, um, my hope is that uh, if if school committee meetings are focusing on buildings, I know we've thrown around that idea a little bit, that I can also focus on buildings myself. Um, so for instance, if FES was going to be a sole focus at a school committee meeting, I would want to do a special piece on special ed at FES and then report out as well. So those are just things that are floating in my mind, preparing for future school committee meetings. And then I also just want you to know that my plan for September is to give a funding and grant update as well, uh, since our grants aren't due until October. I will have a better idea as to what that looks like moving forward.
Thank you for all this information. This is very extensive. It's a lot. I personally kind of like the idea of doing a school by school, as long as we can have his background for information.
Of course, yes.
So um, I like that. So Ms. Sharon, you have a question?
I do. Um, the grade level paras at um, Freetown Elementary School in Asawamset?
Yes.
Can you tell me off the top of your head, how many are kindergarten parents and how many? So let me ask this. So each grade level has at least one paras. Is that correct?
Um, give me one second. I have the breakdown right here. So I can tell you what that looks So at Asawamset, we have four paras assigned to kindergarten and grade two. So that's the way that Bethany splits it, is kindergarten in two. And then we have one grade level para for uh, first grade, one grade level para for just second grade, and then one grade level para for just third grade. And that's the same as um, the para assignments were from last year.
So run that by me again. There's four in kindergarten, but they're split with second
Between kindergarten and second grade. So they bounce between kindergarten and second grade. My thoughts are because the the second grade class size is so large that they need the extra support in in the second grade classrooms. Uh, that's just my assumption. It's not based on necessarily evidence, other than the class size numbers. And then we have one para that's assigned to grade level one only, one para that's assigned to grade level two only, and then one para that's assigned to grade level three only.
And that's AES?
That's AES, yes. At FES, it's a little bit different. So we have four assigned to grade K, two assigned to pre K, and one assigned to grade one.
So we don't have any grade?
There is not one for two and three. But that is again, the same list that was devised last year. So this is based off of the list from last year.
Well, that changed since when we put them on back in 2017.
And then Grace has one grade level para for grade four and one grade level para for grade five. So I don't, I'm not sure when the change happened, but I know that this is the same list of paraprofessional assignments that were there last year.
Okay. We can talk.
Could I ask a quick question?
Of course.
I appreciate the very thorough breakdown. Yes, I did have a question about the school psychologists.
Yes.
Is their roles, uh, both day to day and the the evaluations, is that a, an in-person, face-to-face, or is a portion of that done virtually?
None of it is done virtually. Even when we came back after the COVID closure, we had face-to-face with either partitions or masks with distancing in place. Um, so there is no virtual interactions during testing. And their sole, the sole, um, their day-to-day, excuse me, responsibilities is primarily evaluation. They don't do the social skills piece or the therapeutic interventions like other surrounding districts do. Um, a lot of them are shifting to the role of the psychologist being primarily evaluation and adjustment counselors doing that counseling piece. Just to clarify.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to note, that number is high. I mean, that average is
For the evaluations, yes.
And and just given, I I assume they participate in meetings as well for
Yes.
Each of those evaluations. So the time
And they also go out of district to conduct evaluations for some collaboratives and programs that do not have their own psychologists, or or would cost an astronomical amount of money to pay the the collaborative to do them. So
And potentially responding to classrooms as needed.
Doing classroom observations is another piece of it. It's a lot to ask of these three ladies, so.
Yeah, 108 is a lot. Um, I I haven't seen a caseload typically of more than, it's a little higher than 70. It's usually from what I see, 75 to 85. Our numbers, if you just look at our numbers, our numbers are high. And and so if you look from 2017 to, you know, now, going from 33 to 80 is a significant increase that we have to start thinking about.
Yeah.
And what does that mean to us financially and
Right.
Well, what is our percentage, too? I mean, that's gone way up. We we sort of fit the state average for many years, and now it looks like we may be exceeding that.
A little bit. I don't
Not a lot?
I don't think it's gone up too much.
No, it has not gone up dramatically.
But but thank you for that. That's great. But it it's certainly something to keep an eye on.
No questions?
Yeah, for sure.
No questions?
Thank you, Ashley.
Any other questions further at the team here? I do see in front of me that we have the NEAS letter. So they've picked the um, chair and assistant chair for the visiting team to the ponies.
So I have been asked um, by Kalen and Jeff to ask for two volunteers from the school committee, um, to meet with the NEAS committee on Monday night, the 26th. We can determine times, but sometime late afternoon to early evening, it's a couple hours of time. Um, and so if somebody can send me a couple of names. You don't have to do it right now, but or you can.
Well, I'm just curious, if anyone is interested right off the bat.
Potentially.
When is it, September 26th?
Yeah.
Would you like me to send you an email?
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll do that. Never mind. We're not going to deliberate right now.
Perfect.
Okay, we have the superintendent's report.
So I know it's late, so I I will expedite this as quickly as possible. Um, my colleagues did an amazing job, so I I will take the Cliff Notes version. As a new superintendent, part of my responsibility is to develop an entry plan, which you all have in front of you. Um, we have sat down and had conversations. We will continue to have conversations. I will bring you in two or three times, um, based upon your schedule, to ask more in-depth questions. The questions you have are in front of you. So this is a very transparent process. Um, the questions I'm going to be asking students, questions I'm going to be asking parents, we will be setting up. Parent means, I was very fortunate, I said this in in April and May, um, that my my superintendent in in Waymouth was able to give me as much time as he gave me, because it allowed me to do a great deal of front-loading. Um, that had I started July 1st, it would be overwhelming. Uh, we would get it done, but I was able to build some relationships, so that that's a wonderful thing. What I think, the purpose of this is to really get you to see what I will be doing between now and the end of next year, um, meaning next summer, when we present not only entry findings in January, um, which takes all of the information and all of, you know, put it in in data points and spreadsheets as to where everybody thinks this district is, strengths, um, areas of growth, and where we need to go. And then from there, we do a lot of web work to develop our our strategy moving forward. And you know, by that time, we'll have a lot of data in terms of not only MCAS, but where we are, how Wonders is working, where our literacy, where we need to go financially, and how do how do we build upon the great things that have happened? Steve and I had a wonderful conversation. I am a systems person. If we don't have systems in place, organizations remain here, and we want to move them. Systems are what move things. And and so we are really looking and uncovering an awful lot, some amazing things, some some things that we think certainly need tweaking, and that's what we will be looking at over the next eight to 10 months. So Bob, Bob gave me great advice, which was, don't do too much too soon. Um, and and that's really true. There there are certain things that that we're looking at, that we certainly need to look at in terms of evaluation, in terms of where we're going as a as a district. But um, it will be methodical, and it will make sense for um, with that. Just some some updates for you. We have already started, and I know Stevenson here, but he will be most excited. Um, we will be presenting to you a one- and three-year tech plan, um, a very formal one- and three-year tech plan. So I I have to give kudos to our our tech team. Um, all of them have been just outstanding. Um, anytime we need something, they are helping us. And remember, they're developing the website as well, and and One Call and and everything else, which has been outstanding. I am developing a superintendent's council at at every building for students, where I am sitting with students in in every building and just talking. What is it that you love about? What what would you like to see added? And that will go into part of our plan. A little higher level with with the high school students and 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 a little more fun with with our primary students. Um, we have an Instagram page. One of the conversations we had was was to start Instagram and Twitter. Um, I will encourage you to to join us. It's pictures of what's happening. It's just conversation. A lot of it is just thoughts for people. Um, sometimes it's special education things, nothing wild and outlandish, uh, no political statements, none of that. It's really just about where we are and and who we are as a district. Both handles are at FLRSDsuper. Um, so something to join. I can send you an email, which is which is pretty easy. We are in the process, Karen and I have done a lot of work, and and you're right, she is amazing. Um, working to develop with a number of key stakeholders, and I will need somebody from here to work on um, a capital committee. We really need to start. Um, if we're really going to be serious about where our budget is and and what we need to do um, in this district, we need to really have a capital committee. So so that is on our agenda for September. Um, Ashley mentioned, I am going to be adding something to school committee meetings, um, that I think is vitally important. The one thing I don't think we do enough of is to show what we're doing. So we are going to be inviting a school starting in October, um, where Mr. Ward is going to pick a program in his school. It could be third grade science. It's really up to them. And there, those students will come with their parents, and they're going to present. I really want our kids to start presenting in front of crowds. I think it's vitally important. It's a great habit of mine. I want our teachers to be able to be proud to show what they're doing. Um, I think the community needs to see it on Lake Cam. Um, and then we can add the piece that that you talked about. That will be a very short presentation. I have seen it work, curious, saw it work. It it's been highly successful. We are doing our walkthroughs with the fire department this week and early next week. Um, so so we will be set there. I I don't want to spend too much time on on the entry plan. I don't know. I I'm sure you went through it, so I'd rather leave it um, for questions. But it is a very methodical, and and with the help of Maureen, um, we are very careful in the questions we ask. Questions are very consistent. Um, there will be, um, you made the statement, Ms. Baron, about a survey. We'll be sending something to parents about what they're looking for from a superintendent, um, but it will not be informational in terms of their own students. It's really, for me, what they're looking for as a superintendent. And I will send it to you first.
Great.
Any questions? I tried to do as quickly as possible.
Yeah, that would be abbreviated Cliff Notes version. Great.
There's been a lot of work, and I'm very proud of where Central Office has been. Um, I have to thank Renee for everything that she's doing, of course. But we we are, on on Friday, thanks to school committee, we will be thanking our um, custodians for their amazing work. Fall sports have started, um, which is fantastic. More than half of freshman class is involved, which is a good number. We have, we are, we're at 286 students, um, are playing sports in the fall, which is the highest we've been in five years. The highest we've ever been is at 301, I believe. So 286, coming off the pandemic, is wonderful.
Yeah.
I gave you information on COVID. Um, you all have it. There's really nothing for us to really talk about. You will not be getting COVID updates from me, so I came in at the right time. We're we're not really tracking numbers. The state isn't interested. Um, students can certainly wear masks if they choose. It is our responsibility, um, if we choose to buy masks, and Karen knows that. Um, I, there hasn't been a a lot of requests for it. We still have some left over. We will not be doing in-school testing. That is where you do have to send results, and so we're not doing in-school testing. Um, students who are asymptomatic, or excuse me, students who test positive are asked to stay home for five days. But as the state says very clearly in there, it's the honor system. Um, and and that's, we have to do the best we can. We're, i- if you If you think about it, we're really looking at it as we used to look at the flu. That's where we are. And with Google Classroom, our kids can make up work. So I'm really excited about where we're going. A lot has happened this summer, but yet we've had a great time. And I think there's been a lot of laughs and positivity, and it's been good. So I'm excited.
So I do have a question, since I'm looking at Commissioner Riley right here, who has absolutely said there will be no remote anything.
Correct.
No remote snow days, no remote anything.
Correct.
With the exception of, because of the social emotional issues, suspended students can access, so they don't have to take all that time. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. I just think it's important for people to understand that. We did have some increased behavior issues, and, you know, we're obviously on top of it. They don't have to lose valuable learning time.
Correct.
Because of that action. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that.
And we are, Ms. Fox, continuing with virtual special education meetings.
Yes.
So parents seem to really enjoy that. They can access from work, from lunch, on their break. But we're giving parents the option that if they would like remote, then they are absolutely welcome to come in person, and we will have a full team meeting. But virtual seemed to really get good feedback.
It gives people so much more flexibility.
No questions.
It really does.
No questions.
If sometimes you really need that interpersonal connection that you can only get sitting in a room.
And even our providers who are district-wide, it's just easier rather than traveling, spending time traveling.
So some of our PD might come across, I'm sorry. Some of our PD might come across virtually as well because it saves on travel expenses and so forth.
Exactly.
So we'll blend those opportunities because there are definitely times when we want in-person.
Sure, sure.
I want you all to know that we had, as part of our retreat for the first time in I don't know how many years, Karen may have the answer, we brought the legal, DePietro and Long, to come in to do a refresher on the law. There had been a lot of changes. I am meeting with all the athletics, all of the coaches. One of the things that they are stressing is understanding what's happening in locker rooms is ours. We own that. If we see, we've read the papers, we see what happens in other districts. So we are spending a lot of time preparing our administrators as to how to handle situations, how the law has changed. We will do another leadership. I know that Rick had once-a-month leadership meetings. We've really talked about, anything that I can send out in an email, we will send out. The rest will be about teaching and learning. And so we want to use time as effectively as possible.
Good to hear. Everybody good? I think we've had a rather lengthy evening. Thank you all, and thank you folks for coming.
We knew it would be the first time, but.
Yeah, we had to have the agenda. We skipped July. Yes.
Yeah, on your overview.
Yeah.
There's one sentence in here that makes me uncomfortable.
Okay.
And it's the second bullet down.
On page two.
Develop higher standards for holding people accountable. And I almost read it like we're unhappy with the people. And I think continue to raise the bar or something like that is much more palatable than the way it's written. I mean, obviously want to improve stuff, but I just don't like the wording.
Okay.
And I'm going to agree with you, Bob. That jumped out at me, too. And yet I'm going to tell you that sitting here and listening to Terry and Alan, I mean, you talked over and over and over again about our staff and how welcoming they were, how interested they are, and how hardworking they are. And we have an amazing staff, from principals all the way through, secretaries, custodians, all of us. And we really are proud of that. So I'm happy to see you folks being as proud as we are.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. But I still think that there is, I'm going to go back to systems. We have not done as a district an incredible job in evaluating. There is an accountability. So for example, our custodians have never been evaluated. So legally, they're supposed to be evaluated.
They're evaluated every single day by the staff.
Oh.
So, but they have to be formally evaluated, and they haven't, by contract, they have to be evaluated.
It's in their contract, really?
Yes, yes. And we have not done that. And so there's some accountability pieces that we always have to look at. We're all accountable to someone. And so the system creates that accountability. You know, I can certainly tweak words.
I agree. I just don't like the way it's written.
It didn't read well. And we do, we are, to your point, pretty impressed with who we have. So maybe it's just continue to seek to attain higher standards, you know, something like that.
Yeah, sure.
Yep. All right. I think, oh, in a certain, excuse me.
Just what's the next meeting date? I didn't see it on.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Oh, God, Renee, you're on vacation. It's September 21st.
Superintendent Strauss, do you have? I assume you don't yet.
21st. Thank you.
Do you have a schedule yet for wellness meetings?
I do not. That will be coming out shortly.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, Steve.